With that being said, I think we're ready to go ahead and get started. Thank you very much, everybody, for jumping on. I really appreciate it. This will be our second fully executed remote meeting via Zoom. There is going to be a lot of intro, a lot of talking, a lot of formality, but once we get past that, we'll get into our agenda. So with that, as a preliminary matter, this is Kevin Calcutts. I am the chairman of the Select Board here in Norfolk. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. C.C. Van Time?
I'm here.
Thank you. Christopher Weir?
Hi.
Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Blithe Robinson?
Here.
Judith Posardi?
Here.
Thank you, Judith.
Thank you.
And finally, anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Carol Green?
Here.
Thank you very much. All right, so good evening. This open meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you will find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless our participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Norfolk Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Now that we're past that fun dialogue, Blithe, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Of course. So our first item is to give updates on COVID-19 in Norfolk, followed by public comment. We'll then have a presentation of the results of the FY19 annual audit by our auditors, Clifton Allen Larson. Action items include considering changing the date of the 2020 town election, followed by considering an appointment to the Board of Registars, then to please consider approval of the transfer station fees effective July 1, 2020, to then please consider determining the amount of the FY21 operating budget proposed town meeting. A new item that we added today, please consider extending the deadline to pay FY24th quarter real estate taxes and personal property. And trying to get my screen to change to the next page. Get discussion items. I'm sorry about that. Discussion items include... Techno is still trying to get back. I'm sorry, I'm stuck on a page here, Kevin.
Blithe, can you screen share?
Uh... Probably at some point, but I haven't tried doing that yet.
Okay.
Um, the discussion items include discussing holding virtual select board offices and to discuss whether to move forward with the 150th anniversary parade. And then we have warrants to sign and approval of two sets of minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Blithe. So with that, just a quick round rules identification. Having discussion and deliberation in a remote setting is always a challenge. For this meeting, we're going to be recognizing individuals to talk, and we ask that nobody speak over them, allow them to finish. And if you would like to speak or make a comment during the appropriate period, we please use the raise hand function. You can find that by clicking on Participants on the bottom toolbar and then the Raise Hand button within. If anybody has any questions, feel free to also use the chat. I'll be checking in periodically for those who are having issues to see if we can support you, get through what you need to. That being said, I'd like to move into our first item this evening. That is going to be a COVID-19 update from our time administrator, Blithe Robinson. Take it away, Blithe.
Thank you. So a few things to report. As of last Thursday night, the Board of Health had met and discussed release of Norfolk case information. They did decide to release case information, and that went out yesterday with our Monday report. We will be receiving case information from our public health nurse every Monday and Thursday. So the thought is that we will report that information each of those times, as well as any other information that comes up that's relevant to pass on to our residents that they should be aware of. The couple of other things that were mentioned in that particular update were that we have made some changes at the transfer station. We're back to doing recycling. We're also selling stickers at the transfer station. I understand we sold about 250 on Saturday. And we also started late last week, rolled out selling stickers online. People can buy them through the website and we'll mail them to them. So hopefully that helps with convenience for folks. We also reported on some opportunities for seniors and folks who are in need in the community of different ways that they can obtain resources directly or by contacting the COA to get some help with those. Unfortunately, the pandemic has resulted in some activities in town that are coming up in the next two months being canceled. I learned this week that both the cleanup day in mid-April by the Grange has been canceled, as well as the plant and bake sale that happens in May by the garden clubs. That's disappointing, but expected. This Thursday, with the update, we'll also be announcing some changes that the Board of Health decided on with spring mosquito spraying. They have elected to limit spraying to rich bodies of water and wetlands rather than the whole town. So folks, my... And then on within the town organization, we continue to adjust our staff schedules to make sure we're in compliance with the rules. And I'm glad to report that all of our staff are healthy and doing a great job. We feel that through various means, we will have sufficient PPE to address the needs when they're out in the community. And we're also focused on managing the tracking of expenses because, as you know, from the federal declaration of an emergency for Massachusetts, we're eligible for up to 75% of the costs we have expended. And so we've made adjustments in our accounting system to plan for that. Those are the things I wanted to cover, Kevin.
Thank you, Blithe. The next portion of our agenda this evening is the public comment period. We will be attempting to execute a public comment period in which we will allow any participant who raises their hand up to three minutes to be able to share something for consideration by the board or the town administrator should fall within our curfew. I will do a quick scan right now, and I can see I have one person, Mr. Hadad. I'm going to unmute you. Feel free to take your three minutes, sir. Just make sure to state your name and your address before providing your comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Ed Hadad, 138 Red Maple Run. I just want to request that the board, we haven't, of the board, that we haven't heard anything about the police station review that, you know, it's been over a year now. And I'm not asking for it now, but I'd just like to see at some future date it might be on an agenda that we might get some updates as to when it might be coming and what the status of that might be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think that we can share that this has been discussed as recent as our last executive session, where we are continuing to engage all parties involved to be able to exhaust every opportunity that we have to be able to come to a fantastic final place with both the town's considerations, residents' considerations, all in mind. So this is still being worked on, Ed. We are engaging with individuals continually, and as soon as we have something we're able to share, we absolutely will do so. Do we have anybody else for public comment? If you could, please raise your hand. Is there anybody who's having an issue finding the raise your hand function? If you're having an issue doing that and you'd love to, and you'd like to say something for public comment tonight, feel free to unmute yourself and let me know right now. All right, I am seeing no additional requests for public comment. So we will move on to our next agenda item this evening, the presentation of the results of the FY19 annual audit. Blithe, would you like to give us an entry?
Sure. So as you know, every year, the town is required to perform an annual audit of its financial system and funds. And that has been done this year again by Clifton Larson Allen. And Matt Hunt is the principal in charge of our account. So he is on the call tonight to give the board, you know, a high-level overview of the document and Norfolk's financial situation. And I think overall that they found that there were no material weaknesses. All of our books are in order. And I'm not sure that the boards had an overview of the audit in past years. We thought it was a good thing to start doing and making yourselves, as well as the larger community, aware of where we stand in Norfolk. I would ask that perhaps if Todd Lindmark, who actually managed the work on our end of that task, I see him on the call, and he may have something else he'd like to add.
Not much to add, but just, we've had Clifton Larson for several years, all the years that I've been here, for the past four years, going through the audit process. When I first came on board, did a lot of cleanup, created a lot of the accounts were a little bit starly, shall we say. But from that point forward, each year, we keep getting better and better with our reporting, as well as all the accounts being in good order and giving them the materials. They're very good at what they do. They turn around, come on sites, ask a lot of questions, go through all the different records, pretty fantastic and thorough job for the audit process that I've seen of late. So praise them for all the work that they've done. Each year, we keep getting a couple of new people on the assignment, but for the most part, they've been... So I'll turn it over to them.
All right. Thank you very much, Blithe. Thank you very much, Todd. So I'm Matthew Hunt with Clifton Larson Allen. We like to be called now CLA. Clifton Larson Allen is quite the mouthful. So Zoom is starting to try to refer to ourselves as CLA, make it a little bit easier. Also with me tonight is Jim Pietrowski, who's also going to do part of the presentation. And as Blithe mentioned, we have not historically in the past done this kind of an exit meeting for the town's audit. We usually try to leave it up to town's management as to whether they'd like us to have this kind of a meeting. It's sort of in the past, town management has not requested that we do one, but we're very happy that town management and the board has requested that we do one. We do think it's a good idea. To summarize the audit, go over the key points. Again, it's a very large financial statement. It's a 60-plus-page report. There's a lot of information in there, and we're certainly not going to sit here and talk for hours on end about this financial statement, about the reports from the audit. We'd like to give you the highlights, give you really the things, the key pieces, information that we think that you should know, and then open it up for questions from anybody here in the meeting. So without further ado, I'd like to sort of get into sort of the process tonight and then turn it over to Jim for some of the financial highlights. But basically, we're going to talk about the financial statements. We're also going to talk about a two-page report that we issue, which is a report on internal control and compliance. As Blithe mentioned, the town does an excellent job. Todd does a great job. Anne Marie Doug in the Treasure Collector does a great job. There are no material weaknesses in internal controls. There are no significant deficiencies in internal controls. Overall, the town is in very good shape. So we'll talk about that two-page report on controls and compliance. And we'll also talk about the management letter report, which is a report of some, basically some recommendations for some improvements. What I want to do before I turn it over to Jim is I want to talk about within the financial statements on pages one to two is the independent auditor's report. Within that piece of the financial statements is what opinion on the financial statements is. So that's really the key piece of the financial statements, what's our opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion is what is called an unmodified opinion. That is the very best opinion that you can receive in an audit of financial statements. What that means is based on our audit. Those financial statements are free of any material misstatements based on our audit. Basically, that financial statement is a clean financial statement. So I'm happy to report that. And again, a great job by the town's finance team. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and he's going to give you some of the key financial highlights. Take it over, Jim.
Thanks, Matt. And before I start, I just want to say thank you, Blithe. Thank you, Todd, for your welcoming us to this meeting. I also want to express my appreciation for Todd and his staff, as well as Anne Marie Doug and her staff. Throughout the years of working with them, they've been quite helpful in providing us the information that we've requested for the audit. They turn the information around promptly and allow us to do our job that much more smoothly. So I appreciate everybody's effort during the audit. So what I'll be doing is I'll be running through some key financial figures. You'll see in the town's financial statements. The primary focus as far as, is by part of the presentation, is going to be the governmental funds, as well as some insight on the Water Enterprise Fund. And then I'll follow with up some of some key disclosures and key figures in the footnotes to the financial statements. So when we talk about the governmental funds, we look at a short-term focus. And the statement you'll see on pages 15 through 20 is basically going to highlight the general fund, as well as the other major funds that are included in the financials. Now, when we look at the funds, tonight's focus will primarily be the general fund and the Community Preservation Fund. However, you will see there are several major capital project funds that are in those financial statements, as well as a column that includes all of the other governmental funds, which is entitled "Non-Major Governmental Funds." So again, primary focus tonight's presentation is going to be the general fund, Community Preservation Fund, on the governmental funds, but there are some other items included there. So when we look at the general funds overall results, this is for the year ended June 30th to 2019. You'll see that the GAAP basis fund balance at year-end was $3.1 million. Now, as far as restrictions, there's not a significant volume of restrictions or encumbrances or assignments in that fund balance, which leaves an unassigned fund balance of around $2.4 million. Now, this unassigned fund balance, your available cash, it's consistent with the prior year. And you also see that out of this fund balance of the $2.4 million, 1.7 million of that amount is general stabilization fund balance. And just to give it a key indicator of that unassigned fund balance, that represents around 5% of general fund expenditures and transfers out for the year. So when we look at the operating results of the general fund in fiscal '19, we see the net change on the GAAP basis financials was around $638,000 reduction in that fund balance. Now, when we compare it to the budgetary fund balance, which is your cash basis, the reduction on the budgetary statement on pages 59 through 60, that was around $1 million reduction in that position of, to be a fund balance. And what that's basically represented by on your cash basis, your cash basis budgetary statement, the town anticipated to utilize $1.7 million of reserves to fund the 2019 operating budget. But in current year results, what was found was that there was a positive favorable variance in budgeted revenues of $245,000, along with a favorable expenditure variance of $427,000. So when you take these factors into consideration, these favorable variances with the budget, you'll find that the positive revenue, the favorable variance of the budget compared to what was anticipated, it was around $700,000. So that favorable variance of the $700,000 in the revenues expenditures, you'll see that that offsets against the 1.7 million that was expected to be utilized, which leaves you at that around $1 million use of fund balance on the budgetary basis general fund statement. So next, we'll shift our focus to the Community Preservation Fund. And you'll see on page 15, that fund had ending fund balance of $3.4 million. I recognize $330,000 of revenues, which is primarily represented by third charges, fund-out expenditures of $24,000, and also made a transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust of $311,000. So overall, no significant net change in the fund balance there. And then we look at the Water Enterprise Fund. See that at that fund, the net position at year-end, you have around $14 million invested in capital assets, along with $1.1 million in unrestricted net positions available to fund. We look at the activities for the year. The overall change in the net position was around $300,000. So still healthy unrestricted fund, net position in the Enterprise Fund without a, with a pretty level change in the operating position there for the water. Now, I'll just, I'll shift the focus here to just some other key financial highlights. You'll see on the overview of outstanding debt and the footnotes to the financial statements that the total outstanding debt for the town at year-end is around $31 million. In fiscal '19, there was around $9.2 million issued of new debt, which primarily is represented by the Public Safety Building, as well as the Water Enterprise Fund. There were some debt issued there. Reductions in debt were around $1.8 million. And just to give an idea as to the debt service that's being funded year to year, it was around 2.5 billion of expenses, which was the principal in interest. And just to give an idea of the relationship of this debt service to other expenses, this was around 4.4% of total expenses. So another key figure we just want to call attention to is just the town's other post-employment benefits liability and the liability associated in the long term with providing healthcare costs to retirees. And you'll see that information included in pages 49 to 51 of the report in footnote 11. And what you'll see is that the ending net OPEB liability at the end of the year, the town carried a $26 million liability for these benefits. And that's an increase of around $5 million from the prior liability in fiscal '18. And what this can be primarily attributed to is a larger number of retirees than expected, combined with an increase in medical care cost assumptions. Now, what you'll also see in this footnote, there's some disclosures related to the assumptions that the actuaries using to project the town's net OPEB liability. Some of the key disclosures include the discount rate, which as of now is the 20-year municipal bond rate, which is required in the town's case where there is no net position to offset the liability. And when we look at some other key disclosures, there's also some information related to sensitivity of the liability, which looks at if certain assumptions were to change in projecting the other post-employment benefits liability, it provides some insight as to what the swing would be if those figures, if it were to change, either increase or decrease by 1%, when we look at the rate, as well as the healthcare to cost trend rates. Now, we also have found, you know, in working with our audit, is that the town's OPEB actuary, Odyssey Advisors, they've been an excellent resource for us, not only for the town, but for many clients as well. So when strategizing about the old town's OPEB liability, they can be a great resource to speak to, to talk about certain things related to projections in that liability. So we just want to throw that out there. They're a very helpful resource for us, and they... And then the last key financial figure that I'll highlight is just the town's net pension liability. Now, the town has a proportionate share of the total net pension liability of Norfolk County Retirement System. So this proportionate share of the Norfolk County liability didn't, the proportion itself did not change from the prior year. However, the total liability for Norfolk as a whole had increased, which resulted in a $3 million increase in that pension liability for the town. We found this primarily related to the investment market and the performance in 2018, which is what Norfolk County's report is going to reflect. And you'll also see on pages 53 to 54, what is going to be similar disclosures there to talk about the methods and assumptions used in developing that pension liability, very similar to the OPEB disclosures. It'll also identify some targets and rates of return related to the investments in the Norfolk County Retirement System and give some key sensitivity figures as well. So with that said, that's basically the high-level overview of the key financial figures. I'd like to turn it over at this point to Matt, how to go over some of our other required reports.
Right. Thank you, Jim. And again, when we're done here, which we're almost done here, we'd like to turn it over for questions. So sorry that we're kind of breezing through here, but again, we want to pick through the highlights here and then open it up for questions. And again, I do feel like we're pointing out here the highlights of your financial statements. So the next report that we want to talk about is a two-page report that is required by governmental auditing standards. We have to, as part of any governmental audit, we have to report on whether there are any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. Really, in layman's terms, basically, if during the course of our audit, we felt like there were any internal control matters that really were so significant that we felt there was a significant risk that your financial statements might be materially misstated, we would have to specifically segregate those items. You know, a lot of people don't understand management letters, you know, they think about management letters. Well, if you had significant deficiencies in internal controls that were so serious that your financial statements might be misstated, we would actually have to report those separately in a different report. We're happy to report the town does not have any of those. We also, as part of a government audit, we also have to report on any non-compliance with laws or regulations that also might impact your financial statements. We're also happy to report that we did not come across any of those during our audit also. So last report that we want to talk about is your management letter. So basically, the management letter, it are matters that do not rise to the level of a material weakness or a significant deficiency, but they are matters that we want to report to management, that we feel are some improvements that could be made. They're just basically recommendations for things that we can feel could be improved upon. So jumping right in, first thing relates to the transfer station, just as a little bit of background. Blithe being the new town manager, one of the first things that she did when she met with us is that she wanted us to do a specific, what we like to call a site visit, separate audit of the transfer station. As part of an audit, you know, we don't necessarily look at every single department. We look at it not from a materiality perspective. So we don't necessarily dig into every single department. So Blithe wanted us to look at the transfer station a little bit harder. So we went and did some procedures related to the transfer station. What I'd say is that overall, I actually found the transfer station, I think they really do a very good job. So the comments that we have here in the management letter, these are really just recommendations for improvement. But I would say the transfer station overall, I found them actually to do, I felt that they really did a very good job. So really, first comment relates to policies and procedures. The transfer station does have written policies and procedures. And I'll start off by saying, a lot of departments and a lot of municipalities in Massachusetts don't even have written policies and procedures. So right off the bat, the fact that town or Norfolk's transfer station has that is really kind of rare, to be honest with you. And I felt that their policies and procedures are very good. But our comment does list out, and I won't sit here and talk about all the different things. You can see them in the comment. There were a few things that I felt like could be added to the policies and procedures, just to kind of enhance them and sort of beef them up a little bit. Other commentary related to turnovers to the treasurer related to deposits. Those are standard forms that get submitted to the treasurer every time that they make a deposit. They are signed by someone at the transfer station to provide accountability. We also feel like as an extra layer of accountability, that a person from the transfer station who reviews those deposits could also sign off on those just to add another layer of accountability and review. And then the other thing we identified in our management letter comment is is that the DPW does do an inventory of the trash bags that are sold. And they do a very good job of maintaining that inventory in Excel. But sort of as an add-on for documentation purposes, we feel as though they should also do a physical count of the trash bags and document the reconciliation of that physical count of the trash bags and show that that reconciles to the Excel count that they keep track of. So again, overall, feel like the transfer station does an excellent job. So these are just some things that we feel would enhance their operations. Also, in the management letter on page three, one of the procedures that we did for the audit this year, it's a procedure that we don't do every year, but we do it every once in a while, is that we'll send out letters to banks that every year, you know, the treasurer says, hey, here's all the banks that we have bank accounts with. Well, every once in a while, we'll send out letters to banks that aren't on that list just to see if there's any bank accounts that are under the town's tax ID. that maybe shouldn't be under the town's tax ID. So what we discovered through that process is that there was a particular bank account under the town's tax ID that was being held by the Norfolk Police Officers Bargaining Unit come to find that that particular bank account should not have been held under the town's tax ID number. And my understanding through the management response in the management letter that that is being dealt with or has been dealt with. So again, that's a, that's the reason why we do that procedure every once in a while, just to see, it's a very common occurrence. Every once in a while, you'll see these organizations that really aren't necessarily part of the town, but they're sort of quasi part of the town and they'll open up a bank account under the town's tax ID. They really shouldn't be doing that. So that's why we do this procedure. It's a very valuable procedure. And we would recommend that the town even consider doing that procedure on their own on an annual basis, just to see if there's anything floating around out there. Page four relates to risk assessment and monitoring. That comment's been out there for a while and also is frame of reference. This is a comment that's in almost all of our audits for all of our audit clients. It's one of those things where it's, you know, it's hard for towns and cities. It's going to continue to be really hard with resources to be able to put emphasis on risk assessment and monitoring. The town has excellent internal controls and excellent written internal controls. But as an extra layer of internal controls, it's also a good idea to have a risk assessment and monitoring program in place, which is basically what I like to look at as sort of an extra layer of internal controls where, you know, in a perfect world, you'd have almost a subcommittee, a risk assessment and monitoring subcommittee that would, you know, meet on a periodic basis and say, okay, whatever, whatever our risks here within the town, whether it's cash handling, whether it's IT risks, you know, any kind of risk that you could think of related to the town, monitoring those risks, documenting those risks, making sure that you have controls in place, sort of an overall overarching risk assessment and monitoring program. And the comment really sort of gets into some of the areas that you would want to focus on for that. So really, the recommendation here is as time permits, as resources permit, you know, recommending that the town put some emphasis on that. And again, it is a resource issue. It is one of those things where a lot of municipalities have this as a management letter comment. And it's just one of those things where it's, it is hard to put, put the emphasis on this. The other comments in the management letter are really just what we call informative comments. The Government of County Standards Board has come out with a couple of new Gatsby statements over the years that are coming down the pike. One is Gatsby Statement 84, which is really not too impactful. It's just going to change the financial statements a little bit. Right now, you've got what are called agency funds, and those are going to change to what are called custodial funds. It's really not a major change, but we'd like to make the town aware of it. And then the other one is Gatsby 87, which is going to change the way leases are accounted for. And really, the crux of the change is, is that there's no more distinction now between operating leases, which is like rent versus capital leases, which is basically like purchasing equipment. There's no more distinction between the two. And basically, any kind of a lease is now going to go right on the balance sheet. If you're leasing something, it's going to go right on the balance sheet as a liability. If you're leasing something to someone else, any money that you're receiving is going to go on as a receivable. So that's really the essence of that particular Gatsby statement, really depending on the leasing activity that the town has. It really might not have a huge impact. But again, we like to throw these informative comments out there just to let the town know that these things are coming. So again, overall, big picture, it's a pretty light management letter, really not a lot going on. Overall, I think the town really does an excellent job. They're very well run when it comes to finances. So with that said, appreciate the time and would like to open it up for any questions.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank you both for giving us such a thorough outline, both Matt, I really appreciate it. I don't have any questions to start, but I'll pass it on to my other members of our board. Chris, do you have any questions, gentlemen?
Kevin, at this time, I don't have any comments. I think it was an outstanding report. And congratulations to the finance department for continuing to do a good job.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chris. CC, any questions or comments from your end?
Uh, no, no questions and no comments.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from our attendees? Anybody who has a question who's attending the meeting tonight, please feel free to use the raise your hand feature. I am seeing none. With that, I want to thank you, gentlemen, both very much again. Matt, Jim, thank you for the thorough outline. Truly appreciated, and you both have a great night.
All right. Take care. Have a good meeting. Thank you. Take care.
All right. Moving into our first item for this evening. Please consider changing the date of the 2020 town election. Blake, would you like to give us a little bit of background?
Sure. So at our last meeting, the board voted to postpone the meeting, but they didn't, we didn't pick the election, but we didn't pick a date certain. And so after conferring with Carol, we put this back on your agenda. We had originally discussed having it on June 2nd, kind of staying with the theme of the town has its, has its election on the first Tuesday in May and the and the town meeting the week after. And so the first, that same theme would have the election on June 2nd, if we moved it to June. As we continue through this emergency, Carol has given some thought to perhaps having it later in the month just on the hope that we can be out the other side of this emergency and can have a successful election. So I know she's on the call. She and I have talked about June 23rd, and we've outlined in the background memo some, you know, some pros and cons to that date, so the board can debate it and set an election date tonight.
Thank you, Blake. I think the logical first step would be to introduce our town clerk, Kyle Green, to share her thoughts.
Good evening, everybody. Could you guys hear me?
Sure can.
Oh, fantastic. Um, so I wanted to, I wanted to ask the board if they would please consider moving the election date to June 23rd. With further, you know, thinking about this and with the uncertainty of what is going on, I think the later that we can make it, the better. The bill from the state allows us to push it. It has to be done before June 30th. That's the one restriction that's on it. I was hoping to, you know, have it a little earlier in the month. But I would rather, if I'm going to err, I'd rather err on the side of caution and have the safest situation for everybody, you know, between residents that are showing up for the election. My poll workers, you know, my people working, you know, basically the whole thing. Trying to get my thoughts in order here. This is a kind of a strange medium. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with that date or?
I don't have any questions. Chris, do you have a question for Carol?
No questions, Carol. Thank you.
CC, anything for Carol?
Uh, no.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Blake, I have one question for you. I believe that we've already identified that our town meeting will be on June 9th, correct?
We've already voted that. That's correct.
Is there any kind of complexity or weirdness that we introduced by having our town meeting be before the town election, whereas typically it's vice versa?
Uh, no, I think, you know, it's been our practice to elect whoever's going to be new on a board prior to the meeting. And they get, you know, a week to get up to speed. Having it after just means that the people who say put the budget together are still on the board until the election happens after the fact. If, if there's ever been some discussion about what's changing it, this might give people a good sense of what it would be like doing it once for the future, but there's no issues related to it. No.
Very good. Thank you. Chris, any questions in general?
None with regard to this. Nope.
Kevin, can I just say one more thing?
Sure. Go ahead, Carol.
One of the things that I wanted to, wanted to say, and this is, you know, a great opportunity to say it, is one of the things that was in the bill that allowed us to do this was also allowing early voting by mail. So I think that's going to be extremely helpful in, you know, in getting people to have every opportunity they possibly can have to vote. And that's something that we're going to, we're going to push to the residents and really try to make everybody aware of in any way we can and hopefully encourage early voting by mail.
Thanks, Carol. One question that came in the chat was, you know, the process of accepting the town election results on the town meeting warrant. I imagine that would just be done external of that process, Carol?
Um, that's actually, I would talk to Jay about that. I asked, I had touched base with Jay because it is Article 1 of Town Meeting is the election, and Jay said that there wasn't, wasn't any problem with having the meeting after. I think that the Article 1 of Town Meeting being the election, I think that's more. The election is the election. The town meeting can't change that. So I think that that's more, you know, just how we've always done it. But I don't know that if town meeting voted not to accept the results of the election, that can't be done. So maybe that's why Jay said there was no issue with it.
Very good. Thank you, Kristen, for the question as well. CC, do you have any questions or comments in general?
I do not. I know that there's, I think, at least one other question in the chat, but I don't have any questions.
All right. With that, I will open it up to attendees. Jen, I see that you had asked a question. Did you want to verbalize that? You're still on mute. Let me unmute you.
No, I'm assuming, I mean, that in the event we do have it at the end of June, that maybe just out of an abundance of precaution, Carol, would you consider still kind of limiting the number of people at one time so we're not still in crowds? I'm just saying before that happens.
Great question, Jen, and it's actually something that I've already thought about. We don't know what, you know, type of situation we're going to be in at the end of June. But I already have, and I've discussed with, you know, Blake, I've touched on it. You know, a pretty solid plan of how to, you know, how to mitigate that with myself or the assistant town clerk, Anthony, actually sitting outside and directing people in and only allowing a certain number of people in. We would even look up what precinct they're in so that we could direct them straight to that precinct and some other safety measures and precautions that would be put into place.
Thank you.
Good question, Jen. Thank you, Carol. Does anybody else in the, in attendance tonight have a question as it relates to the moving of the town election date? Looking for a raise hands to be called on. I am seeing none. With that, I would move that the board set the town election date on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. Do I hear a second from the board?
Second.
Very good. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye? Christopher Weider? Chris, I think we might have lost you.
Aye.
Take that as a vote. Carolyn Van Tine?
I'm here, Kevin. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we got your vote. Thanks, Chris.
And I said aye.
And CC Van Tine says aye unanimously voted through. Thank you once again, Carol. Much appreciated.
Well, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You too. That moves us to our next item this evening to please consider an appointment to the board of registrars. Seems pretty cut and dried. Blake, anything to add?
The only thing to add is I think you all received an email from Mr. Rosenberg, who couldn't join the meeting early tonight, just giving his thoughts on not this appointment. He has no concern about this appointment, just asking the board in the future to consider rotating the number of registrars from each party in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Chris, any questions, comments, concerns?
No, but I had a chance to talk to Donna DiSenzio today, and I understand that it's her job to appoint this person, so I appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you. CC, any questions, comments, concerns?
None.
None whatsoever. Okay. With that, I would move that the board appoint Peter Stagg to the board of registrars for a term to expire on March 30th, 31st, 2021. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye? Christopher Weider?
Aye.
CC Van Tine?
Aye.
It is unanimous vote. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Stagg. Our next item this evening is to please consider approval of transfer station fees effective July 1st, 2020. Blake?
So, as you know, the board discussed this at its March 17th meeting, and staff believe that generally the board was comfortable with the fees that we had proposed, though Mr. Weider asked us to look at the fee for renting a roll off container, which we have. And we made, so there's one change from what you saw in mid-March, and that's to change that from $200 per rental to $400. With that, we believe that the revenue for the full year would go up next year to $310,000, which we're currently budgeting. And I know that both Barry LaRiviere is on the call tonight as well as Todd. So I would just ask if either of them has any other thoughts or input they want to give you before you deliberate.
Kevin, I'll jump in now. So we looked at, I know Chris had a concern about the roll off rates, so we looked at what we had in the area. The average is about 500 per roll off rental. We didn't want to go up that high at this point in time. We thought 400 was a good number. We could reassess next year to see if we want to increase any higher. We don't want to lose customers. We want to keep residents still using our roll offs, and we want some revenue there. So the 400 was the number we decided with.
Thanks, Barry. Chris, questions, comments, concerns?
No questions or comments.
CC, questions, comments, concerns?
None of the above. No questions, no comments, no concerns.
Thank you very much. With that, I move that the board approve the revised fees and charges for the transfer station effective July 1st, 2020. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye? Christopher Weider?
Aye.
Carolyn Van Tine?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Barry.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening is to please consider determining the amount of the fiscal year '21 operating budget to propose to town meeting. Blake, would you like to lead us in?
I would. So as of, after the last meeting, we understood the board's concern about a significant change in the contributions for health insurance retirees, and we had valued that at $120,000. So based upon that, Todd and I have reexamined the budget and reached out to other departments. And what you have in front of you is the result of that, which is a couple of modifications to revenues and then a number of reductions across the budget in various expense accounts to balance the budget again without any change in retiree health insurance. And the budget now would be $41,191,364 next year, as it's presented tonight. And just to give you a general overview, you'll find it in the packet, there's a list of changes that Todd had prepared. They are the revenue that we just discussed, the transfer station increase of $10,000. We slightly adjusted ambulance receipts after talking to the fire chief upwards. And we've made a free cash adjustment upwards of $27,000. There's also a number of expense reductions totaling about $90,000. And they include, I'll just read you the more significant ones. Reducing the solar generation electrical expenses by $15,000. Reducing ambulance billing because we're putting that. Reducing ambulance billing, uh, because we're putting that work out for RFP. We expect to find a more competitive, um, provider of those services at less cost. We need, we've asked the library to reduce their budget by $10,000 and that will impact, um, some of their weekend hours throughout the year. We, uh, discussed with the Norfolk schools, they could reduce their budget anymore and they have, um, suggested they could reduce it by $30,000. Uh, we made a slight adjustment to the historical commission's budget because of the delay of holding the 150th anniversary party. Um, and we reduced, uh, salaries in the finance department because of, uh, staffing changes we've made this year. So, um, and I'd also remind the board that we have made some other changes prior to this. We have cut one and a half positions from the budget already this year. Uh, those being the DPW superintendent position and the part-time, uh, IT, uh, tech position at Town Hall. Um, we also included in your book, um, for this meeting, um, we've given you what some other scenarios could look like for retiree health insurance. If you, if a 15,000, uh, 15,000, excuse me, 15% change for what a retiree pays is, is, a larger change than you're comfortable with. We modeled what a 5% and 10% change would be as well. Um, taking it on the, the minimal end of 5% change, uh, would be worth about a $40,000 reduction in the budget. And if the board wants to discuss whether that's something you're comfortable with, uh, our recommendation would be we just overall reduce the budget by that amount. We don't seek to, to put any of these, um, reductions back in, uh, given where we are with the pandemic and what we expect will be the impact on the budget next year. So, um, I suggest if you have, that we give Todd an opportunity to weigh in on anything he wants to add, um, and then be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Blithe. Go ahead, Todd.
So Blithe, you covered pretty much most of the, um, items that I was going to, um, talk about, especially with the changes in the budget. Uh, from where we were last time to where we are current, where we've gone over all the different changes, both in the revenue and the expenses. And again, if we look at, um, the healthcare as it is, you know, the healthcare insurance for retirees, a 5% change equates to about a $39, $40,000 change overall in the budget. And again, if that was to be decided to do, do that and move forward, um, ultimately what we would do is reduce the, um, revenues. Uh, so reduction in the free cash usage, um, to help offset that.
Thanks, Todd. Um, uh, to start, I'll throw it over to the board for questions, comments, concerns. Uh, Chris, do you want to start?
Um, again, I think, um, you know, I applaud the efforts and I know, um, we don't know the results yet of COVID-19. But, uh, how will it impact us? But I still think we, we seriously now have to look at this budget even deeper before we can actually pass it on to Town Meeting. I mean, we, we're looking at 15% unemployment rate, 10 million people unemployed. Uh, and we don't know if that's the end of it. We've never seen this kind of financial crisis since the depression. And I think that, uh, to pass on to Town Meeting without having contingency plan at this time is, um, it just, uh, it's, it's, it's not appropriate. We can't wait and see what's going to happen. Um, I hate to use the word austerity measures, but I think we have to be prepared for austerity measures so that we don't go back to the days in 1980s and early 1990s when Norfolk had to make drastic cuts, uh, because we couldn't balance the budget. So as, I, I think they've done a good job. I think we have to do more. And I think, um, we just, I think we, we would, we would be remiss as the executive board to go forward with a 2.4% increase without having a contingency plan, um, as this epidemic continues to, uh, to increase. And we haven't seen the apex here, especially in Massachusetts. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, Blithe, did you want to speak to some of the measures that would be available to us, uh, to deal with any unanticipated impact, both in the negative and positive from the COVID situation?
Sure. I say, I think it's in part, it's important to understand, um, uh, before we go back to our unions, and that would certainly be a step that we would need and want to take. Um, if, when we understand the full measure of, of the financial impact on the town. The first thing I think we want to know, and a number of our, you know, sister communities are asking, is what is going to be the anticipated reduction from the state? The state was supposed to have a conference call today about, um, impact on itself, so we can start to make some decisions. And, uh, they actually had to cancel the meeting for technical reasons and push it off by a week or so. And on a conference call with the Lieutenant Governor today, you know, she has, uh, steadfastly said they're just not ready to discuss what it would mean for, uh, the state and what local aid cuts that we can, um, expect. Um, I think for Norfolk specifically, it's not only local aid reductions in, um, lottery numbers, it's also, uh, Chapter 70 dollars. And it's also potentially prison mitigation funds, which are discretionary. I think those are the things that we would focus on the most from the state level. And on the local level, um, I would anticipate as our restaurants have reduced their services, that we will see a reduction in, uh, meals tax revenue. Um, but it's, it's too soon to say how much impact will have in the, in the next year on, um, say, uh, building permit revenue. Um, that's another indicator. As I mentioned earlier, and Todd's given, uh, you the background, it generally takes about a year for, uh, a recession such as this to really hit our local receipts. But that doesn't mean, as, as Chris pointed out, that we should just sit back and wait. I think we need to wait a little longer, um, and see what's going to happen with the state. And then, um, when we understand that, we're in a much better position to go back to our unions, um, both town and school, and discuss with them what it means and, and work to partner with them to make whatever adjustments we need to, to balance that budget. Perhaps we can make those adjustments at the fall Town Meeting. I'm certainly very, uh, willing to do that. Um, because it will be necessary, I expect. Um, I don't know if Todd has any other thoughts he'd like to bring to the conversation.
Uh, you covered pretty much most of what I would bring, uh, as far as the information. It is kind of early. Uh, it's not to say that, you know, that we're not looking at it, that we're not taking steps, that we haven't thought about these items. Um, yes, uh, we are going to potentially have to address them, um, whether we do it in the budget now or, you know, let's wait and actually see what the numbers are. So that we have something definitive we can discuss. That's the hard part right now.
Yeah. I would make one other point, Kevin, and that is, um, I was in a meeting today about the, um, addition of two new towns to the, the MECC. And those, the financial impact for Norfolk is very positive. And I'd like to go over that with the board at the next meeting, but just to give you a preview. Um, if that goes forward and we're all, the four towns are working closely on doing that, it's, the outcome is that the four FY '21, our assessment would go from the $380,000 that's in the budget to zero for FY '21 and FY '22, and then it starts to adjust after that. I'm not saying that that's the, the, um, easy way to balance this budget because I think we have to make sound decisions about how we prepare for the future when our MECC assessment goes back up. But it may be a portion of what helps us, um, work through this financial change. It just will not be able to be done for this annual Town Meeting because we've got to get all the pieces in place. And they really won't be in place until probably, uh, the end of June. Thank you.
Thanks, Blithe. Uh, just a blanket question. I mean, I, I tried to tune in today for the Senate Ways and Means meeting as well. And, uh, unfortunately, like you had said, it was postponed. And I think a lot of people were looking for some guidance to come out of that meeting as far as what to expect in terms of impact, or at least what the state is going to be projecting. Um, if they do come out, let's say they have a meeting next Tuesday and the resounding opinion is that we can expect anywhere from a 10 to 15% reduction in revenues, which they will indefinitely pass along to local aid. Um, if we hear that kind of feedback as in how come from that meeting? Are there still adjustments that can be made prior to our proposal at spring Town Meeting? Or are we still in a boat to wait and see what actually comes out at the end of June?
I think if they come out with that in, information and it's a concrete number, then I think that's something that we can work towards. And we can look at the budget more closely. But I just don't know when they're actually going to do that. Um, that's really the hard part.
Yep. Understood. Thank you. Uh, Chris, anything else you'd like to add?
Nope, not at this time.
Thanks, Chris. Cece, any questions, comments, concerns?
Um, yeah, so I'm sure I have the same number of concerns as everybody else who's tuning in, maybe from different perspectives, but obviously lots of concerns. My overarching concern, I certainly hear what Blithe is saying, that if the worst comes to pass, hey, there's always a fall Town Meeting to address it. But I'm wondering if we can't maximize the fact that we've been given, albeit we don't want it, we don't want any of this. We've been given somewhat of a delay in Town Meeting, the annual Town Meeting. If there isn't, if it isn't prudent to at least wait, to your point, Kevin, to see if we get some more concrete information in the short term. I'm incredibly uncomfortable and I know that there's sort of this idea, and I hope for it as well, that everything will ultimately be fine. But I am incredibly uncomfortable with the idea that, um, it will be fine and so we'll just put forth the budget as it is. And if it's not fine, we can regroup, uh, in the fall. I, I'm not saying where I think that any monies could even come from. I just, you know, looking at, and when I'm looking this way, I have my, my desktop has the, um, the budget up on it. I haven't figured out the, how to get it all on one screen. So my desktop over here has the numbers. And so that's why I keep looking over here. So I'm looking over here and I see, um, new growth, 600,000. And that was what was touted back in January or even earlier. I think it was in January. It was, if you do the 2.5% and then you do the new growth, we've got three plus percent, 3.14 or whatever it was. And then how do we spend that? And do we spend it all? And we decided we don't want to spend it all, but isn't it great that, that we could? Um, and now I suspect before I ever even get into what it is that I think the state will do, I suspect that that new growth, we're not going to have it. I'm under the, I, I understand that people are already backing out of deals for new, um, building that's going on in the town, right? I can't go and I can't pick out tile. I can't pick out flooring. I can't pick out carpet. I can't pick out anything. I don't know what's going on with the economy. I'm backing out of my house deal. And, um, then I understand, um, that as Blithe pointed out, things like prison mitigation money might go away. And you know what? I'm sure everyone on this call remembers the last time we guaranteed, we banked on prison mitigation money. And then at the end of the, in the middle of winter, like the end of December, we had to have a special Town Meeting to figure out who had, um, we had to cut. And, um, I, I'd love to know what is going to happen with the Chapter 70 money. I'd love to know, because I've heard numbers like 20%. Um, these are all scary numbers and I appreciate the communications saying, um, we need to do doom and gloom and cut it down to negative 5%. And I appreciate the people who say, stay the course. We need to keep it at what it is because maybe things will come around. Uh, I don't know the answer. I just know that it's, um, if we weren't, you know, the FCC wasn't involved, let's say it's a shit show. And we're not, I don't know what's going to happen. And I'm just wondering if it isn't, if we don't have at least a week or two to see if we do know. And then, all right, we find out, look at, this is going to give us this money. We're not going to get, you know, 20% of Chapter 70. We're not going to get any prison mitigation money, but we're still going to have to send our ambulances to the prisons. We're not going to get this certain other money. Meals tax, I understand that will take a year, but the growth won't happen. If they're not building, if they're not finishing it, we're going to see that earlier than a year. And now what does the budget look like? And where else can we cut? And I'm not necessarily saying that it would be a cut all the way across the board, but is it a request that everyone go out and sharpen their pencils a little bit more? And see if they can't do more? I don't know. I, I don't have the answer. I don't think anybody on this call, any of the 36 people have the answer. They'll tell you what they want. Do, um, but they don't have the answer and neither do I. So my question is, do I have to vote today? Because I'm telling you I have some serious concerns. Or is there something else that I can do, we can do so that we maybe have a little bit of a better sense of what is going to, what, what money we have to spend? Because the money we thought we had to spend in January and February and even in early March, the money I thought we had to spend, uh, we may not have to spend. That's my thought, the question for whomever.
Blithe, was there something in there that you'd like to address?
Yes, uh, two things. One, I, I'd like to, for Todd to weigh in on, on new growth because that's, that work is done in his department. I think he's got a better handle on where we probably stand this year, um, for FY '21. But I would point out that, um, you know, I think a, a part of this needs to be going back and talking to our bargaining units um, at the appropriate time to help, have them help us be part of the solution to, you know, the, because that's the biggest cost to the town, our people. To resolve this so we can, could all move forward. And, you know, having done this a number of times over the years, I can tell you that, um, until we have a good handle on what that gap is that the town needs to make, um, it, those conversations are usually not fruitful with unions until they believe that you actually have a problem that, that you need them to partner in solving. And so I do think, I, I, I would agree with Cece that I think we need to continue to wait. Um, it's now early April. Um, for a few more weeks to figure out what that is. Um, because if we go to them and say, gee, we think that there's a big problem, but we don't know how big it is yet. Um, I can assume that they're going to say, well, gee, you don't know what you need from us, so why should we give something up? And hey, don't forget, you've got, um, 600 and some thousand dollars in free cash and X amounts, you know, 1.7 million in stabilization. And they won't be willing, as, as willing to bargain with us in a way we need to. Now, having said that, I haven't sat down with them and bargained before because I haven't been in that cycle yet. I'm making a general statement about how these things usually go. And I'm not saying that they won't be very willing partners. I, I think that they will be. Um, but I'm just trying to caution that we will be more successful at that once we have a little bit clearer picture. And that's why I'm suggesting we just, we need to wait a little longer. Um, but if Todd could weigh in on new growth, that would be helpful.
Sure. The new growth number is based on, um, the numbers as of June 30th this year. So, um, while I don't have those numbers in front of me, um, obviously I'll be looking at those to make sure that they tie up to get to that $600,000. And then we'll just have to make an adjustment accordingly in the budget. Like I said, this budget is always fluid and almost to the point of Town Meeting itself because there are changes that happen. And obviously we have to take into consideration, uh, the changes from the state, um, which I think really is, um, a key component here for this. So, um, while I'll be making sure to review what that $600,000 impacted and the growth that we're in line with it. If we're not, I'll definitely make sure that you guys are aware of it well in advance. Um, as soon as I know that number, you guys know the number. I guess I, I do feel that we need to be cautious on a going forward basis. But like Blithe indicated, there's a lot of unknowns. And until we get those knowns, we really can't have those fruitful discussions to get to where we need to be, I think. My two cents.
Thanks, Todd. Uh, Cece, anything you wanted to follow up with, sir?
Yeah, just to follow up. So I'm, I, I, I just want to make it clear. I understand that some of this information, um, would require us to be completely appreciative and we're not. And so, right, you have to wait until the end of June for some information and maybe even longer for other information. Um, and I'm certainly mindful of the fact that if the avenue that you go, you decide to travel down in order to adjust for, um, any deficits includes approaching unions or indeed others, that they're going to want to know that that they're going to want to know that there is really a problem before they commit to disadvantaging their members. I get that. All I'm saying today is that if we have the benefit of a few days or weeks to see what the interim numbers actually look like vis a vis state's money, aren't we advantaged by waiting for that? Because then we can say, all right, well, now we know what it really looks like. And here are some more creative ways of avoiding going to, to unions or, or carving out from the school instead of, that's it. And so my question, as much as it seems like I'm pontificating, I'm not. I'm just sort of circumnavigating my question. My question is, can we table voting on the number until a time certain wherein we may or may not know what it is the state may do? And maybe we come back at that time, two weeks from now, whatever it is, and the state has still said, eh, I don't know what I'm going to do. And then we deal with it. But where they tried to tell us today and then had a situation normal, et cetera, I think it behooves us to wait and see. Because my sense is, and I have as much information as anybody else, but my sense is that they're going to reduce what they give us.
I agree, we can wait.
That was all my question was.
Blythe, is there anything that is dependent on this finalization vote of a number to move forward in terms of pre-planning, presentation, review, anything of those natures?
No, there isn't. I, I, I agree with CC that we definitely can wait. I'm getting, I'm getting used to the goalposts moving on a daily basis and getting comfortable with that. So I would say, you know, when we go to advisory tomorrow night, we'll simply update them on where we stand and what we're thinking about and keeping an eye on. And we'll work through this at the meeting, late meeting in April and both the meetings in May.
Thanks, Blythe. I will just add to that, you know, aside from the, the fantastic feedback we've gotten from Blythe, from our state representation, I also reached out to our neighboring communities to see what their take and what they're doing from a planning perspective is. And even in just the small King Philip region, I can tell you that one community is already looking at ways to reduce what they're going to be proposing at their, at their annual town meeting. And the other community has opted to hold off and stay the course until they get more clear direction. So it just goes to show you the amount of variability that's out there right now in terms of how to deal with what's being presented to us. That being said, I don't have anything else I'd like to add to the conversation either. So I will turn it to the attendees for questions, comments, concerns. Before I do that, I do want to echo CC's sentiment that we appreciate everybody who sent in emails, regardless of what position you're taking on this, to stay engaged, share your opinions and tell us how you feel. It really helps as we go through the process of assessing what is best for the community. So thank you all for that. That being said, I will toss it to the attendees at this time. If you would like to share a question, comment, you are more than able to do so by using the raise hand function within the Zoom application. If you don't know where that is, you click on participants in the bottom toolbar and you will see a button for raise hand. That being said, we have our first one. Ms. Wing, go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. So first of all, I, I agree with CC. I think that decisions should always be made upon facts and data. And I think even one of the select people here have always said, like, you shouldn't make decisions on a penny, penny, chicken, little, the sky is falling kind of scenario. And I agree with that. We need facts and data. And as many of you know, I am a teacher, I'm a speech language pathologist. I'm trained in making decisions with data and facts, and that produces the best result. And with that being said, I think it's very important that we look at what we have. And I agree, if we're not getting money, and then yeah, we have to cut. I definitely agree. But to go with a penny, penny approach, I, I, I think it would do a huge disservice to multiple town departments. That's it.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, next on the list, we have Mr. Hadad. Go right ahead, sir. And you're still on mute? There you go.
Okay, thank you. I, I also agree with CC, there's too many unknowns out there. I think the one known that we have is that we are in a financial crisis. And, and anybody that thinks we're not, or we're going to be out of it very soon, I think is very naive. If you look at the state, uh, look at the town's revenue numbers, the state is just one part of our revenue numbers. We have fees that are three or four million dollars. I think they're in jeopardy as well. What does the town do if we have a shortfall of revenue of a million dollars? I mean, we're talking 30, 40,000 here and there. I, I think we're talking a lot more than that. And with regard to the employees in town, I think it's a respectful thing to talk to them now. I think we owe them that respect. That we don't go back to them at the last minute and say, oops, we made a mistake and we've got to cut you. I, I think we should respect them and we should talk to them as adults and say, they know what's going on around them. They're not, they're not unaware as well as, as we're talking about here. So I think it's a respectful thing to talk to them and say, look, we are in together. This is what we're talking about. And, and at some point, we may come down and speak to you. But I, I, I think that's done now, not at the, at the 11th hour. I think it's a respect thing. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hadad. Do we have anybody else who'd like to share? I'm looking for a raised hand to call on somebody else who would like to share. All right, I am seeing none. So it sounds like, at least from the board's perspective, there, there is a desire to learn a little bit more. I'm sorry, if anybody can go on mute, please, if you are not already on mute. A little bit of background noise, I'll help you along there. There you go. It, it does sound like the position of the board is that we need some more information to be able to finalize a, a number for our budget for presentation at town meeting. We do understand that there are other pieces that may be awaiting this determination as it pertains to, as Kristen had mentioned, the advisory board review with department heads, the questioning that goes on, presentations and such. But I do not believe that any of that would be negatively impacted by us waiting until our next meeting in hopes of getting some more clarification from the state in that time. So with that, I, I believe we'd be bypassing the vote on this this evening and tabling a vote on this subject until our next meeting on February 20th, February, April 21st. Is that right, Blythe?
That's correct, Kevin.
Chris, any last comments, questions, concern on this item?
No other comments, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you. CC?
Nope, none. Putting it in my calendar right now.
With that, we'll be moving on to our next agenda item this evening. Please consider extending the deadline to pay fiscal year 24th quarter real estate and personal property taxes in compliance with chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020. Blythe, some background, please?
Yes, so on Friday, the governor signed this act passed by the legislature that makes a myriad of changes that's helped us navigate this, this current emergency. And one of the changes, and we've included the whole act in your packet, is to allow the, a town by a vote of executive officer, which is the board, to extend the date by which tax, that the fourth quarter tax payments are due. So while Todd's still on the call, wanted to bring this up to you and see if this is something that the board might be interested in doing. As you know, taxes are due in the fourth quarter on May 1st. The bills for this went out very early this calendar year or just at the end of last. We send two bills a year, so people already have those. But we, we've thought about this internally in, in terms of cash flow for the town and paying its bills and balancing that against perhaps providing our taxpayers with a little more time to gather those funds together if they're having a difficult time and delaying that till June 1st. We believe that this is something the town can, can manage. And today, the state sent out advice saying that we don't need to reissue all those bills. We simply can put information out in various means to alert people to this. There was a second, there's another provision there about the, about deferring, about waiving any penalties and interest payments. We would actually like to take a little more time to analyze that because the impact appears that it would be a bit confusing. And we're hoping that the state can clarify that before bringing this to you to take any action. So while Todd's still on the call, perhaps he's got some input as to the change of date from May 1st to June 1st. Thanks.
Change of date from May 1st to June 1st, again, that is an option that's available currently. It does need to be voted in by our select board at the town level. But the state of Massachusetts has allowed that happen for us. 50% of our revenues that are received are mortgage companies. So we probably receive those on May 1st anyways. And I expect, anticipate the 50% that may take advantage of the additional wait time. Most of them are going to probably pay on May 1st as well. This again allows an opportunity, if a person needs to wait a month, make that payment, it is available as an option. I don't think it will impact us in a harmful way. Again, cash flow wise, we're good at the moment. So changing the date from May 1st to June 1st would be my recommendation. Again, with respect to the late payments, interest, penalties, things of that sort, we still need to get some more information on how that can be handled. I know our systems have already been updated to account for that. So from a system standpoint, we're good to go. It's just more or less logistics on how do we handle the payments and when they're received? When is it late? When is it paid? All those good things that they're working out with the Treasurers Association and the DLS. So again, recommend voting for the extension, holding off for the interest and penalty payments until we have more information at that point, which we're probably bringing to you at the next select board meeting.
Thank you very much, Todd. Questions, comments, concerns? Chris?
No questions or comments. I think it's a great idea. I think it will, if it helps even one person, that's good during this pandemic.
Thank you, Chris. CC, questions, comments, concerns?
No.
I think that was a no. So I'll just confirm, Todd, in the worst absolute case scenario where the 50% that do not pay via their mortgage companies all decide to pay on June 1st, that will have no impact in negative fashion to the town's operations for that month, right?
That is correct.
Thank you very much for confirming. Much appreciated, sir. I have nothing else to add to the discussion. Therefore, I will turn it to our audience members. If you do have a question or comment, please raise your hand. I see one. Mr. Rosenberg, go right ahead, sir.
One of the ways of paying real estate taxes is through the UniPay, UniBank. And there's an auto payment wizard. And I guess I'm curious if somebody has set, is using, using the auto pay wizard and set things to be paid on the due date. Do you have any idea how changing the due date? Would, would that, when, when would the auto pay wizard make the payment if you decide to change the due date?
Todd?
That'd be a good question. I'd have to follow up and get back to you, David. My understanding is probably if you set it up, you recall if you had to put in the dates yourself or was that just you selected? Because I haven't used it myself, so I'm not familiar with the system itself.
No, I, I actually wanted to be able to put in the dates myself, but it doesn't allow me to do that. It basically allows me to select that the payment is on the due date or three days before the due date or five days before the due date. But I don't get to pick dates.
So what I'll do is I'll confirm with the treasurer tomorrow because we'll have to contact the bank and see what we need to do as far as making those arrangements, if it is accepted. And we haven't accepted it, so I couldn't even find out whether or not to make those changes. But thank you for that question because that brings up a good point and I'll get an answer for you and we'll get it out and post it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Does anybody else have a question in the audience tonight? If you do, please raise your hand. I am not seeing any other questions. So with that, I would move that the board approve an extension of the deadline to pay fiscal year 24th quarter real estate and personal property taxes from May 1st to June 1st. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Hearing a second. Roll call votes. Kevin Calcutta, aye. Christopher Weider?
Aye.
CC Van Tye?
Aye.
It is unanimous passing. Thank you very much. For those who are sick of hearing a roll call vote, you'll be glad to hear that we are done with our action items this evening and moving on to our discussion items. Our first item for discussion is to please discuss holding virtual select board office hours. Blythe, unless you have anything to add, I'll be happy to put the background on this one.
You got it, Kevin.
Sweet. So we had previously implemented monthly office hours since September of last year. These have been met with some varying degrees of success and participation, typically with the same handful of people attending. But I do believe that even just one person finding value and being able to come and dialogue with a member of the board indicates success. With that being said, we aren't able to do that in this current climate that we're in. And in an effort to be able to offer that service to residents, I wanted to discuss with the board our appetite for executing these monthly office hours in a virtual setting. Now, we've had the time over the course of the last two weeks to work through many of the learning curves and quirks associated with executing mobile interactions. But there, there have also been a number of individuals, both at the state and other neighboring local levels, who have found ways to execute these one-on-one kind of interactions in this format. That being said, I did want to gauge the board's interest on attempting to offer this service to residents as we work through the next couple of months in this virtual setting. I would imagine it would be executed in the same fashion, once a month, rotating time, rotating individual who's hosting. But with everybody being locked up in their houses, I imagine there might be some more folks who might be open to spending a couple of minutes talking to a member of the select board, if nothing else, just to get away from the kids for a little while. So that being said, I did want to toss it over to the board for their opinion. And we'll start with CC. CC, your thoughts and concerns?
I was actually hoping you would start with Chris because I'm sure he was going to sound a lot nicer than I will. But whatever, here we go. And I think you know, because you and I have differing opinions about this. I'm not a fan. I like office hours when it's in person. People know that they can come, wait, sit with you for a little bit. That's making you seem accessible. I think that if you're having virtual office hours, you editorial are having virtual office hours. It's, first of all, I cannot stand this medium. I don't like looking at myself. I don't like worrying about whether or not I like shoving my finger up my nose in public. I, I hate everything about it. I haven't yet figured out how to have SpongeBob behind me or me buying a fighter jet or wiping off 20 years' wrinkles. But I'm going to do that later. I'm going to figure that out later. But for now, if somebody wants to talk to me, shoot me an email. Ask me to give you a phone call. I think I actually owe David Rosenberg a response. I don't like the idea of virtual office hours. We're not mandated to have office hours. We offered to have office hours to sort of continue down the path of transparency, to be able to allow people to come in if they, if they knew you were there for a particular period of time. You know, that two-hour window where they could happen along and come in and pop in with their question if they were there paying their water bill or it was before the Board of Selectmen meeting or, or whatever, sort of human contact with someone that they wanted to ask questions of. Sitting on Zoom for two hours, waiting for somebody to come and ask a question is anathema to me. And I know that there's people who are at home with more time on their hands. I'm at home with like eleven B kids trying to do remote learning, you know, for the schools that provide that. And I am also trying to work and my husband's trying to work. And that it just, I will say that I am, I'm really bearish on it. I'm bullish on going back to office hours once we arrive out the other side of this pandemic. But I, but I'll note, I agree with you that in terms of the folks who usually turn up, there is, there are some, some folks who come to everything. And sometimes it feels like it's just to reiterate what they weren't able to get, get across in the the meeting itself. And so I don't think that they need an extra virtual vehicle when everybody's just trying to weather everything else that's going on. I know that's cold. I know it's just me. I know that that will be, you know, in the unlikely event that, that, that there's a hotly contested Board of Selectmen race during the year that I'm up. That would be something that they could use against me. I don't, I don't like it. That's just me, though.
That was a not nice response? That wasn't bad at all.
I really feel, I don't like it. That's how I really feel. I don't like, not for me.
Noted. Now, I will identify that I don't think the intent was ever to have a two-hour open block where you make yourself available and whoever comes, comes. I think that something like this would be done more in an appointment setting where you would open it up for people to block fifteen minutes. If nobody blocks, then you don't do it. But I agree with you that, you know, there is a lot going on for everybody right now at home. I completely empathize with you, with the little ones running around and work and everything else that's contributing. It's a lot. But I did want to explore, at least discuss the option for us to be able to do this in the same manner as we've been executing our meetings. Chris, your thoughts?
That was very mean, Cece. No, I agree. I agree with Cece. I do, I would rather be one-on-one with someone. I can deal with this. Obviously, we've had to do selectmen's meetings. We've had to do zoning board meetings. It works. It's not ideal. And like Cece, I'm always open to emails. I think I answered six or seven today from residents with questions. So certainly they can email us. I'll be more than happy to park my car in town hall and put on my mask and talk to anybody who wants to talk to me. But yeah, this is not my favorite medium. But if this is, if this is, helps people, why we're going through this process, certainly am willing to do it still. It's a new technology. We're all learning from it. It's sort of cool. But I would much rather meet with people one-on-one if, if possible.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the one-on-one interaction, I think, trumps all of these kind of things. But I think given the current climate that we're in, what we have available to us, this is really it. And, you know, the basis for the conversation was this being it. Do we want to leverage this to be able to continue those? Or is the direction that we would put more value in just continuing once we get on the other side of this thing like Cece had said? With that, I'll open it up to questions, comments, concerns from the attendee base. I do have one. Ms. Wing, go right ahead. You are on mute. Let me unmute you. Go right ahead.
Okay. Sorry, this is the way I'm in staff meetings as well. First of all, I want to say thank you for opening up office hours. That's really something new and I'm sure very much appreciated by many people. My question to you being is, do you find that a lot of people go to these things? Or, and also could many of the questions and concerns be dealt with through email? Because I, like Cece, everything is just so chaotic right now. And you add one more person to the house, two more people in your household, three more people in your household, and it is extremely chaotic. So I, you know, if it's something that can be done through email, I would urge you all for your sanity to do that right now. And I think most people would understand that. And go back when business gets back to normal to doing that. But I would say for all of your sanity, I mean, even just going to the grocery store takes, and cleaning all the food, it just, you know, things could be done through email. And I would just say to all of you, to take care of yourselves and take that off your plate.
Thank you, Jen. And just to answer your question, I can only speak for myself and not the rest of the board, but there are only two to four people in the busiest office hours that I've held to come to talk. And in most cases, a lot of their questions could have been addressed via email. But there is a certain aspect to dialogue that folks, I think, appreciate when they have more complex questions than just something they can shoot off in an email. There's a back and forth aspect to it, I think, that people see value in. Next, I have Mr. Rosenberg on my list. Go right ahead, sir.
So I had sent in some written comments about this, this sort of address to the public comment period because I was an able attendant. Were they read by anybody? Or should I just assume they were not read and start talking about it?
Please start talking about it, sir.
Okay. So I very much appreciate the level of transparency and openness that this board has been following. And I thought that the office hours were a very good idea. I appreciated the opportunity to speak with selectmen. I've spoken to each of the three of you. And I felt that the conversations were helpful to me and I hope helpful to you also. There's sort of a hierarchy of preferred modes of interaction with face-to-face in-person things being best. Maybe, maybe I'd say video conferencing second, telephone conferencing third, emails fourth, you know, texting last on my list. I very much like to see you continue some form of direct interaction with constituents during the coronavirus. I had mentioned in my written comments that I thought Zoom could be used. But if select board members are uncomfortable with Zoom, I think there are certainly other options that could be used. I would consider email a pretty poor choice because of the fact that you, that if you try to have a dialogue, you know, and you want to react to something that somebody said, it just drags out because of the time lag. So I'd like to suggest something that is more highly interactive than, than email. But it need not be Zoom if we have select board members who are uncomfortable with Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I do have one more hand up. Donna Jones, go right ahead.
Thank you for being available in past in-person office hours. If somebody does have a question, do we send it to one specific person? Is there any, any, any select person at all? Or do we send it to one person and they send it out to the three of you?
So if you are emailing the board with any questions, we would encourage you to email any of us on the board. We would also, you know, recommend that if it is something that has to do with the data data operations in town, that you call up your town administrator, Blithe Robinson. But you are not required to put any number of participants on a question or comment that you're posing to the board. You're able to send it to a single member or you're able to send it to everybody as a group. It's completely up to you.
I just didn't know if, if I sent it to the three of you, would you talk amongst yourselves to say, well, I'm going to take this one? I wouldn't want all three of you to be researching it.
If you were to send it to all three of us, we would coordinate who would respond in a singular fashion on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Do we have any other comments from the attendees this evening? I am seeing none. It does appear that the majority of the board would prefer to focus on the in-person meetings once we do get to that point. And far be it from me to try to push more of my millennial technology on anybody. So I'm more than happy to take a stay on doing any further virtual office hours and instead focus our efforts on getting back up and running with in-person office hours once we get on the other side of this thing.
Did you just age shame me?
I was more age shaming myself. Everybody's talking about the wacky technology.
Snapper millennial technology on you, old bogey.
I thought that was more self-deprecating than anything else. That was intended to be.
Well, I'll remember this, Kevin. When I can come outside, watch out.
There we go. Parking lot. Got it. Moving on to our next item this evening, please discuss whether to move forward with the 150th anniversary parade on September 13th, 2020. Blithe, what do we have some background here?
Thank you. So Paul Terrier reached out to me a week or so ago to say, give me an update of what he and his team have been doing to put together portions of the parade and, and think about the details and the fundraising and ask this to be on the agenda tonight to discuss with the board where they are at and whether or not the board still wants to move forward. So including your packet, is that background he provided? And I see that he's on the call tonight. I also forwarded to the board sometime this afternoon, some input we received from recreation. Some thoughts they have about it, just so you had that in front of you as well. And I know that they have shared that with Paul. So I will leave it there for Paul to pick up.
Hi, all. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Thank you very much. Go right ahead.
Okay. Thanks to the select board for the invite. So you saw the packet that was sent. I just wanted to bring you up to speed as to where we were contribution-wise and group-wise from putting together the parade so far. That's where we're at. We've kind of put a hold on things until we get, you know, this whole pandemic situation has put everybody, I think, into a tailspin. And wanted to know your thoughts, impressions, recommendations, how you would like to proceed. Certainly, it's all of our hope that this is over by the end of the fiscal year and certainly during the summer months. But there's no certainty in that statement. And it was part of our last discussion when we got together at our last meeting. So I'm just going to kind of throw it out there. I think you see the packet. We've got about close to $5,000 of committed funds, whether they are promised or they've already been sent in. We've got a number of groups. We really haven't even scratched the surface insofar as a contribution list is concerned, nor have we really scratched the surface from a participant's standpoint. So I, the other situation, once we get beyond this, is, is a parade route. But I think that's a bit premature until we kind of figure out which way we're going to go with, with, you know, having the parade. Move forward and, you know, bring your thoughts and ideas.
Thank you very much, Paul. I think we're getting a little bit of background noise. I'm going to mute everybody for a quick moment to see if that eliminates it. Yes, it does. So first and foremost, thank you for putting all of this time and effort into the pre-planning for this very important event. I think the community is very excited to see this happen and come to fruition, especially after all the discussion and work that you guys have put into it. That being said, I did want to hear your input on the concerns raised by the Recreation Commission as they relate to COVID, as they relate to Patriots Home Games, and as they relate to the potential conflict with Norfolk Lions Soccer.
So no question that the, you know, when the rec sent that letter out, they had expressed that concern once before. And, you know, we, we kind of looked at the dates pretty carefully with respects to which is the best day, whether it's a Saturday or a Sunday, the least impact from a religious standpoint, where we picked on a Sunday. Time-wise, Patriot's schedule was taken into consideration. Yeah, unfortunately, you know, you can't, you just, there's no possible way for us to accommodate every group in the town as to, you know, accommodating their schedule. I, you know, I, I don't know how that could be done. So as much as I appreciate their comments, I would still recommend that date if you wanted to move forward. And of course, certainly it's up to the board, you know, how do they want to move forward? So.
Thank you very much, sir. At this point, I'll talk to my board members. I will start this time with Mr. Wieder.
Thanks, Kevin. And I agree. And I think you have to put a, you have to put a stake in the sand. So I, I think, he's right. We just have to have a date outlined and we're not going to be able to please everybody. So, and I think Paul has to do a lot of work lining up some of these participants. And I think they need to know a date as well. So I think we almost have to stay the course and, and see where we all end up. I think we've got a long way to go here.
Thanks, Chris. Of note, I do believe that there have been a number of major sporting events that have been rescheduled for, before September 13th. And I believe those were done with a lot of caution to ensure that they wouldn't have to be moved again. So I would say that from a COVID impact perspective, September 13th does appear to be a relatively safe bet. Knock on every piece of wood that one can. But I do also understand the aspect of it where many of the committed funds for this event are from local businesses who may be feeling the strain of what we're experiencing right now as well. Cece, over to you.
So I also understand the need to pick a date certain for a, any event, a parade or whatever else. I think, and I appreciate what Paul has to say about the monies that have been committed or already paid. I think that given the current financial situation, the most that you're likely to be able to bank on is the money that's already paid, not necessarily committed. That may be a problem, but that's not my problem. It's just an observation. What would be my problem, and I know I'm on record as saying this, but I can't let an opportunity pass, is anybody, any of Norfolk's money going to the parade? I know I'm on record with that, but I'll say it again. I am uncomfortable, especially given what's going on with the current economy, with an idea wherein we pay any monies. And I know that nobody's looking for that for me today, but I just can't help myself. I also note that it's a free country. If you want to pick the 13th and it ends up being bad, that's, that is what it is, right? If, if nobody can go because of the coronavirus, you've made that commitment. You've taken the money from the people who are willing to give the money, not from the town, but from the people who are willing to give the money. And if nobody shows up, nobody shows up. But I also understand that, that the date that you've selected may be the perfect date. There's no way to know. And so I think it's fine to pick that date so long as everybody understands that it may be a situation where you don't have anybody in attendance or there is a traffic incident that, the likes of which we've never seen. But I agree that if you're going to go forward with your parade, you need to have a date. And you might as well pick that date and then stick with it and see what happens.
So I'll just, I'll just jump in on that. So certainly, you don't want nobody to show up. And we've taken great measures to ensure that anybody who's contributed money would receive that money back or have the option of keeping that money in escrow, so to speak, because that's been set up with the town treasurer. You know, the treasurer, so that we have an accounting of everybody who's put money in. If we decide to cancel completely the parade, then so be it. We possibly could get to the point where we put the parade off for, into 2021. We would have that money there, right? It's not our intention to spend any money prior to the parade unless, of course, you know, we had to put down payments. And so far, we haven't had to do anything. And we've been primarily relying on social media to get the word out and so on and so forth. And again, let me just. media to get the word out and so on and so forth. And again, let me just stress that we really haven't even scratched the surface because, you know, the whole pandemic thing is, is thrown us into a bit of a topsy-turvy here, although there are some encouraging signs out there. You know, the realistic part of me says, you know, it's probably going to be longer to get over than it is shorter to do.
I'd just like to add, if I can, I'm by no means suggesting that you would be keeping money that someone had donated and not going forward with the parade. What I meant to say, or what I meant to suggest, obviously, I failed miserably, was that you intend to go forward with the parade, that your budget may not be what people have committed, your budget may be just what people have already paid, that the people who have committed may not be able to actually make good on their commitments due to other financial situations. But I certainly understand, you've made very clear that if the parade didn't go forward, you would refund money. I was only speaking in terms of if you went forward with the parade, and, and I know I'm telling you something more to know, that your budget may be limited not to what people have committed, but rather to what people have already paid, that the money in the door is the really, the only metric that you can count on, if you went forward with the parade. I'm not suggesting you are going to do anything on tour. I do.
It could be a very short parade. It could be a very short parade, the way it looks.
I will, I like short parades. But I also, I, I understand, I like the idea, and I know that nobody's committing at this time. We're just kind of, you know, noodling around with ideas. I like the idea of having a set day this year, which is the year of the anniversary, with, for lack of a better term, a rain date, if it is still, as I've already coined in the FCC, as they called me at A Shit Show, of 2021, right? Like, I mean, I don't know, like, keeping our knees flexed a little bit, but I do respect the need for there to be a date certain.
Very good. And, you know, I will also throw out there, but by September, we should all be Zoom experts, and we're more than happy to execute the parade via Zoom if necessary.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Yeah.
Give me a filter. I'm good.
We could do a virtual parade.
There you go. All right. If we have nothing else on the board, I will open it up to attendees. If any attendees has a question or a comment they'd like to share, just please use the raise your hand function, and we'll call on you. We do have one person with their hand raised, Ms. Wing, go right ahead. You are still on mute. Go right ahead.
Sorry. Think I'd be better at this by now. Is it Paul that's in charge of the parade? I just see him as P-H-T-E-R. Paul, thank you so much for organizing this. I mean, we're all very, I think we're all here. We may have some differences of opinion, but we all, we all love the town. So thank you very much for your hard work. It's not easy. I was wondering, have you thought about maybe coordinating with Community Day so that it's just one whole day, only because sometimes in September it gets a little crazy with back-to-school sports and all that other stuff?
Yeah. So two things. So Donna Jones and I, we're kind of co-coordinators. I don't think we really pick the hierarchy with respects to who's the sole coordinator. We're both putting a lot of effort into it. Yeah. So just, I'm also a member of the Lions Club, and, you know, Community Day is, is a large part of our contribution back to the town. That said, that's in June, and from a timeline standpoint, logistically, when we first started out, it was, it was putting a huge strain just trying to put this together in the September timeframe, let alone trying to step it up and possibly accommodate it in June. That said, I'm not quite sure where we are as a, from a Lions standpoint on Community Day. It might absolutely be put off. I know the pole plunge has been put off, and a few other activities have been put off. So, yeah, I mean, it's a good idea. There's just, the Lions, we get stretched very thin on Community Day. It takes 40 to 50 of us to, to just accommodate all the activities, all, all the things that go together. And I know the Lions are a large part, they want to be a part of the parade as well. So they, you know, they would be, I, I, I'm putting the hit on them, and they know that, to participate in this parade. So keeping it separate is, is the way to go from a Lions standpoint, Community Day.
Thank you for explaining. That makes absolute sense. So you don't want to bundle it in with, like, haunted train ride, Community Day.
That's even worse.
No, I'm being, I'm being facetious. I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right. Next up with a hand raised, we have Ms. Donna Jones. Go right ahead then.
Thank you, Jen, for the compliment. Also helping Betsy Pine with the anniversary dinner, which was scheduled for May, Saturday in May. She postponed that. She put on the school calendar of September 26th to have the dinner, and just to determine later if we can have it, if people are able to travel to get to it, if they'd want to be in a room with 300 people. I'm just curious about if there's a time that we should say, no, we're going to cancel both events. I mean, for the parade, it's like you ask a band, can you perform? We can or can't pay you, and we'll set up a contract, but understand we might cancel. Should we say two months' notice, six weeks' notice?
Yeah. Donna, I, you know, just to kind of echo that sentiment, you know, that, that thought runs in my mind as well. You know, I, I think, as a committee, that, you know, first of all, we haven't talked about that. But I think it's important that we kind of see the trends that, that develop, number one. And where's the direction from the state coming? If they're starting to relax the social distancing rules and whatnot in the May timeframe, I, I think we've got enough time to, to put this together. And, you know, when the warmer weather comes, you know, everybody feels a bit better. I think the parade could be a great celebration time, especially in light of what's going on. So.
I will also note that on April 11th, the NFL schedule will be released for the coming season, and you will have some better ideas to what the Pats impact might look like on that date, if there is one to be had. We have one other attendee with their hand up. Anne Marie, go right ahead. Nope, you're still on mute, Anne Marie? There you go. Go right ahead.
Oh, there it goes. No, I, I believe I heard Cece say she didn't think town money should be, should be spent on this. I completely agree. That's all I wanted to say. I don't think any town money should be spent on this, given the, all these circumstances. That's all.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else in attendance today who would like to make a comment or have a question? Looking for a hand raised? I am not seeing one. So as it pertains to the, go right ahead.
Oh, no, never mind. I think I might have figured it out. I was asking, I, I saw Jen Wynn had like a little thumbs up emoji show up in her little square, like her game show square. And I was curious how she got that, so I was going to ask you, millennial. But then I noted reactions down at the bottom on the left-hand side. So I answered my own question. Look at me. Woohoo! And I'm muting myself.
Remember to unmute. You have the teacher, Kevin, and I can talk whenever I want. So I just remembered I can unmute myself. Yeah. So Cece, and tomorrow, if you would like, I'm happy to do a Google Hangout or Google Meet if you have the G Suite, and I will teach you all how to screen share, because teachers have been learning this for the last two weeks.
I love that Ed Haddad just did an emoji, and Jen, I am totally open to being schooled on all of the words that you just said that I don't know what they are.
Okay. Well, we go through the configuration setting to see how to disable reactions moving forward. We'll talk more about that in future meetings. A quick point, I was corrected that I am not a millennial, I am a Zenial, in case anybody was confused by that comment. A Zenial, not a millennial. The overwhelming opinion that I think we're hearing today is that, you know, having the date be set for the date that the committee sees fit does make sense with the option for us to be able to flex on that, should we get any kind of new information, whether it be an extension of guidelines and orders from the states, whether it be a direct conflict with the Patriots schedule when that comes out, whatever that may be. So long as we're flexible with that, and we're, we're keeping in tune with that, I think that having a marker in the ground is a good way to move forward. Anybody on the board disagree?
Nope.
Nope, I agree.
Very good. Well, Paul, I do hope that was the direction that you needed. If there is anything else that you have, please let us know. But once again, thank you very much to both you and Donna and the committee for all your hard work. We really do appreciate it, and the town is very much looking forward to this parade.
Awesome. Thank you.
With that, we'll move to our next agenda item this evening, which is to approve some warrants. It looks like we have Cece up first. Cece, you have everything in front of you?
I did, but my screen just went dark. So what, can you skip me and go right to Chris while I bring my screen back up again, because I have to go through, like, free inculcations to get through the firewall at my firm. So.
Absolutely. Chris, are you ready to go ahead and do your warrants?
Yes. I move that we approve the warrant of 324, 2020, in the amount of $372,791.69. Move that we approve the warrant of 324, 2020, the amount of $7,268.80. I move that we approve the warrant of 327, 2020, the amount of $852,980.34. I move that we approve the warrant of 331, 2020, the amount of $826,887.38. And I move that we approve the warrant of 331, 2020, in the amount of $32,396.67.
I second, with a seconded motion on the floor, we will do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye. Christopher Weeder?
Christopher Weeder, aye.
Cece Van Tyn, aye.
Beautiful. All right, Cece, up to you.
All right. I managed to get it up. There's something wonky going on, but I did it. I'd like for the record, I would like the record to reflect that I think that Chris read his deliberately fast to see if I wouldn't be at fault. That's a conversation for another day. I knew that the following warrants be approved, March 13th, 2020, $825,965.40. March 17th, 2020, $20135.48. March 17th, $103,614.87.
I second the motion to approve and call, roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Cece Van Tyn, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
All are passed. Thank you very much. Our last item this evening is to discuss some approval of minutes. Cece, you're prepared to make the motion?
I knew that we approved, what minutes am I approving? It doesn't say.
March 4th and March 24th.
Let me write it down. I can't, my screen is frozen right at the, the regular one. So March, tell me again?
March 4th and March 24th.
Thanks. I can't, I can't scroll by this screen, so at least I got this. I knew that we approved the minutes for March 4th, 2020, and March 24th, 2020.
But I saw you come off mute there. Did you have something you wanted to throw in there before we move forward?
Not about the minutes, just a question to the board when we're done with that.
Thank you. So I second Cece's motion to approve the minutes for March 4th and March 24th, and call, roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Cece Van Tyn, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you. Blythe, what did you have for the board?
Just one question. Wanting to find out if everybody can be available next Tuesday, the 14th, at 6:30 for a joint executive session with the planning board?
I am available.
Sorts of really exciting plans next Tuesday night, life, lots, lots going on in my life. But for you, I will move all of my, my exciting plans.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'm here. I'm here for the town.
Chris, were you available? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I am.
Very good. There we go. We have our answer. All right. So that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting this evening. We've covered all of our items. Our next meeting will be on April 21st. So feel free to come and join us then. I will, very quickly, before we adjourn, just thank everybody for their efforts as they pertain to social distancing and isolation. I know that there have been some instances called out where some people see a couple of people together, but they have been few and far between. And with the overwhelming majority, I think that these efforts have been very successful, at least in our little community. So please continue to execute, continue to do everything we can to get this thing past us, and really look forward to a fantastic summer. With that, I would move that the board adjourn for the evening. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Carrying a second, calling a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Cece Van Tyn, aye.
Christopher Weeder, aye.
Thank you very much. Have a fantastic night, everybody, and stay safe and healthy.